All the meeting to order on the September 1st, 2020, planning and zoning. Seated tonight are the five regular members, myself, David Rathman, Fred Dykman, Ben Filbert, Gardner Young, and Lynn Conway. Also present is Ryan Beasley. Keith, you're up.
Sure, it looks like up first are the minutes of the August 11th meeting. And actually, before that, if I can just do the housekeeping thing of reminding people to please mute themselves, please mute yourselves when you're not talking, whether you're on a regular telephone or you're on a computer, so that way we won't hear crazy feedback throughout the meeting. And please try to remember to say your name before you're speaking.
Keith, Keith, can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, this is Chuck D. I am on via phone. I'm going to mute myself now. I realize I'm not seated, but I am present by phone. The meeting link wouldn't work for me.
Alright, so first up are the draft minutes of the August 11th meeting.
Motion to approve the meetings.
Do I hear a second?
This is Ben, a second though.
Any discussion? All in favor? No, Keith.
Sure, item 4D, administrative review items. 4D1 is Attorney Ted Ladwig's request for interpretation of section 7.1.1, accessory dwelling units, specifically structure, total area versus gross floor area. This issue was discussed by the commission at the last meeting. Everyone back and forth about how to interpret that regulation and decided to ask the town attorney for his opinion. I also gave the commission a separate summary relating to the zoning regulations, how often they pick them up. So we did get the town attorney opinion that I sent out separately. What he says is, basically, it's the commission's call to interpret the regulations, but he thinks that it's more likely that if this went to court, a judge would agree with Mr. Ladwig's interpretation. That it's not really ambiguity there. People turn, remember to mute their microphone.
Okay, hold it. Keith, we're getting awful echo. It's not... On you. We got a dog. Whose dog's barking? Okay, go ahead, Keith.
So yeah, he, the town attorney, seemed to agree more with Mr. Ladwig's take on it, that there's not much of a case for ambiguity there for the commission to interpret, that we might be stuck with looking at it as just total area, as that regulation says, and not using the gross floor area definition. Meaning that the homeowner could count their basement to get over 2,000 square feet in their house, and would be eligible for an accessory dwelling unit. Town attorney also gave us a separate letter that's just talking about different ways that the town could amend its regulations to be more clear. It seems like the best way to do that would just be to go in and add the term gross floor area, where we wanted to say gross floor area. So it looks like whilst the commission's interpretation, town attorney felt that, you know, the homeowner should be allowed to have their accessory dwelling unit based on that.
What's the feeling of the commission on this? Are you talking, Gardner?
Fred, I think you were trying to talk, you're on mute.
Gardner, you're on mute. Did you have something to say? He's still on mute. Okay.
Okay. So, can here?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Fred Dykman, two questions. One is, how quickly can we change these regulations to close this loophole and all this like it? The second is, does one, three years of interpreting this regulation in one way account for anything here? I think it's absurd that we're stuck in this situation, and I hope everybody realizes that every small ranch house in this town is now twice as big as it used to be, or this, and all those small mail houses that are all over town are now half again as big as they used to be for this purpose. I think that we really need to cut this off as quickly as we can. If we can't do it quickly, then I'd say that we're gonna have to go to court.
Yeah, and I think that would be the intention, is to quickly put in a regulation amendment to clean this up, really clean it up all over the zoning regulations, because there are dozens of places where this is the case. It's not just an accessory dwelling.
Our September 15th meeting, maybe?
I think so. If not, then it'll be submitted in October, but it wouldn't be bad.
We've got a problem. Someone's got an open mic. Okay, Lynn.
So, I agree wholly with Fred. I think this language that was proposed was not appropriately reserved for voting rights for clarity. However, I disagree with the town attorney. I do not think that, you know, we should be pressed to allow this to go forward at all. I think that we should shun the spirit of the regulation, which was not meant to be. And, you know, I do think that we should add clarity as quickly as we can. And I do think that at the time that we add clarity to this language, committee may want to take a step back. And we recently had another, first applicant come forward a few months ago, where they were going to build a garage unit and then turn around and turn it into an accessory building, because they didn't meet, you know, the letter of what regulation was saying. So they found a loophole in regulation, and that, again, was not the spirit of this regulation. It wasn't that you could build a garage and then all of a sudden it's a garage and you can turn it into an accessory building. So I do think that the commission should look at that and additional language changes to be proposed at the time the language change for the floor area ratio is clarified. I don't think it, I just think there needs to be clarification. And I think even just putting a parenz in there, saying floor area ratio would make, would serve the purpose of clarifying the language. But I do not think that we should allow this to go forward for this application.
Well, I think we can clarify both things in our new amendment, if we can do it next time. Include that in the amendment, that they can't build a garage and then add the apartment. Maybe we should put that they have to have, it should be there 15 years or something on a property before they do it. Keith, you think we can add both of them?
We could do something, we could do something like that. I mean, fixing that is an awkward proposition. There's not a great solution to it. It would have to be some sort of time-based thing like that, if that's what the commission wants to do.
Keith, and as I read the, as I read the lawyer's letter, all we really need to do is redefine gross floor area ratio to include all of these haphazard expressions of area that are in the regulation, where it's appropriate, of course. But we don't, we don't have to go much further than making sure that the term gross floor area ratio includes these other terms, so that we're not caught in this bind again.
In definition, in our definition.
Yes. Yeah, that's what, that's what the letter from...
From Ted.
Landrigan said, or suggest...
Yeah, I totally agree with that, Fred. That should not be a hard or difficult change to make. But I do think we need to have something in the regulation, again, of clarification to ensure that there's no ambiguity around the spirit of the regulation. And that is that, you know, if you don't build a garage, then a year later, say, you know, now it's an ancillary dwelling. So we do need to have a, you know, a time put in there for that as well. Because it was not, it was not meant to be that way when the regulation was put forward.
This is Ben. I don't understand the time reference at all. What difference does it make if it's, house is built yesterday or 100 years ago?
Because the regulation was intended to allow people who already had a garage in front of their house to add an apartment there. It wasn't the intention to build a brand-new, build a brand-new one from scratch, though. So the regulation has to better clarify that.
They want some pre-existing buildings, not, I just don't understand why we put a time, 15 years. I mean, we initially started at 35 years, which seemed quite arbitrary. And we fucked that, I believe.
Yeah, but Ben, people could build a garage this week and next year put one, put their apartment in it.
And I think that's what our friend is doing.
We don't want to prevent.
I think our friend in Old Mystic is doing just that.
I know he is.
Okay. So, we say five years? I mean, I don't know.
You know, Ben, I think saying something like 10 years is where, you know, that kind of, I think, would deter that type of activity. Because I don't think it's in, so yeah, I think 35 years was arbitrary in the original reg, and I think that, you know, we had modified that. But I don't think this is easy. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna build a new structure so that I can then turn around and make it into an ancillary building. You know, I think 10 years, circumstances can change, et cetera, that makes a lot of sense. But I honestly don't think that five years is long enough duration of time.
Yeah, we can add something like that to this. And as far as the town attorney's suggestion about just adding one sentence somewhere, saying that all these terms basically mean gross floor area, personally, I'd rather just say gross floor area, where we mean gross floor area, so someone picking up this book knows what we're talking about more. Because otherwise, people will have to know to find this one sentence in the reg somewhere, and people won't notice that. So because I already did this whole memo that lists all these things out, it shouldn't be too, shouldn't be too difficult.
So is the proposal, Keith, that you would go through every, everything that you have in your memo and change it to say gross floor area, and we could do that in one change? Is that what you're saying?
Right, right. Just changing those other related terms to gross floor area.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I mean, that certainly makes sense, that, you know, to me makes it simpler for somebody going through the reg, they don't have to reference anything.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah, I agree with that proposal.
Well, this is Ben. What about the basement and cellar debate? I got a little lost in that. 50% of a cellar is above ground or below ground?
Well, the definition of gross floor area does not include a cellar, which is more than 50% below grade. But it does include what zoning calls a basement, which is more like a walkout basement. So that's sort of the gist of this whole argument with this particular house, is that because it doesn't say gross flare, floor area, it looks like they get to count the basement, the cellar.
But it, but it is, in this case, a cellar rather than a basement.
It is, yeah.
It is.
And so what, what I'm saying about that is I don't agree with the authority, and I think that the commission should, they know that was not how this was written. And thank you for, you know, letting us know that you misinterpreted it, and we'll, we'll help the public out in the future for that. But that's not how the reg was meant to be.
Okay.
I think, I think we have to acknowledge that it is written poorly, all right? And that what we're gonna hang our hat on here is 30 years of interpretation by the planning department to, if we choose to, to reject this, this application.
And, you know, it does, it does seem by changing the regulation, we're sort of admitting that it doesn't quite say gross floor area.
It doesn't say gross floor area.
You know, it's personally not risk, not worth the risk of appeal to court over this one apartment.
So what's the consensus of the commission? That we go ahead and have an amendment for next meeting if possible?
Oh, yes.
I have to say that I think the only reason that this commission would allow this to go forward is not because it's right, it's because you're afraid the town is gonna get sued. And that's ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. The entire commission understands that for 30 years, this has been four area ratio. There was absolutely nobody on the commission that said, oh, no, that's not what it meant. And I just think that allowing this, because you're afraid you're gonna get sued, is just, once again, you know, very poor, very poor on the town's part.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard?
Yes, go right ahead, Ted.
I find myself in complete agreement with the town attorney. When he says in third paragraph, the phrase "total area," look at the statement. And he funny, he goes up saying in his last question, that the phrase "total area" is not ambiguous. If the commission met gross floor area at any time, up to, including 2018, December of 2018, it could have said gross floor area, and no one would have criticized the commission for it. But it continued to say "total area," and "total area" is not an ambiguous term. In doing statutory construction, you have to use the ordinary meaning of the, of the English language as written. Not what, not what you, not what you thought, not that, this, this phrase, "the spirit of the regulations," drives me crazy. Because there is no spirit of the regulations. It is the regulations as written that, you know, that the homeowners in Stonington are entitled to rely on. And that's what Tom Landrigan has found, that, that, you know, the fact that, you know, that you're, you know, afraid of being sued, I agree, you shouldn't be afraid to be sued. You should be afraid to be found to have, to interpret total area incorrectly for a very long period of time. That's what Tom Landrigan has, you know, has opined in his letter, in fact, in two letters. He followed up with a, with a letter dated yesterday, and he was referring to comments which I have not seen, I'm not privy to those comments. But he said, there's nothing in the comments, presumably that we've been doing this for 30 years, you know, and that, and that should count for something, except that the phrase "total area" is not ambiguous. It's very simple. And that's what, that's what a judge is going to find. If, you know, the cost...
Ted, I think we're losing you.
Yeah.
Looks like a connection problem.
Well, okay, we proceed here. I have to admit that, as much as I hate to do so, that I think Ted Ladwig is right. And we are stuck with the words, if you're good planning, and pretty straightforward. And we need to fix it, you know, like the day after tomorrow. We need to get this done. Because, because you're gonna have a flurry of these applications for, for people who all, all of a sudden want to count their basement so that they can put a, a little apartment in their house. It's not, you know, we can't let it happen.
I agree. What's the consensus of the commission?
This is Ben. So again, I'm coming back to what the ADU said originally. It only excluded, what was it, stairways and porches or decks or something? Are we including now the basement? Excluding, I should say, the basement for the ADU.
That's right.
I want to make it clear to me before I say, yes, it's...
We are, we are excluding what are called sellers, not what are called basements.
Okay, perfectly. Yes, I'm for fixing this up and bringing it as soon as we can.
Okay. Gardner, you agree?
Yes, if you can hear me.
Yes.
I got, I got disconnected. I don't know how. Am I bad?
You are.
Am I bad? Hello?
You're not, you're not working.
This is Lynn. To Ben's point, or, I mean, sorry, to Fred's point, do we have a very defined regulation on how you measure 50% of being above ground for basement versus a cellar? Have you looked into that, Keith? Is it very, very clear how you would measure that?
We'll look into if there is some sort of improvement that can be made quickly to that, then we will.
Yeah, I think it has to be a complete package.
Yeah, we'll see if there's anything that can clarify that.
All right. Can we move forward, move forward, amendment, as soon as possible?
We can do that. And there's also just the basic question of some sort of motion or at least a consensus to allow the zoning official to approve the zoning permit based upon the town attorney's opinion.
Do I hear a motion on that? Still moved?
I think I'd like to approve this permit as, as submitted, I guess, huh?
Under protest?
Under protest. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, we'll move on to the next proposal.
But Keith, this is Lynn. Before we move on, I would like to say this to the commission. We have many text changes to our zoning regs. I often feel as if they're rushed. I often feel that the discussions are tilted. And I think this is a lesson learned for this commission, that whatever proposals are being made, need to be really thoroughly thought through and researched from a language perspective. And I'm not sure the commission has done a good job of that in the last few years.
Agreed.
Agreed. We realize that. We've just done a couple of things. One thing really...
Yeah, so maybe, maybe one of the things the commission is thinking about is looking at some of the text changes that have been made over the last couple of years. And I just doing a, a recheck on them, because I think they have been sloppy.
The commission, the changes over the past few years are nothing compared to the language in the zoning regulations since 1961, a lot of which is all over the place, and is very sloppy. So there's a lot of things to change in here. We've always wanted to do a big comprehensive change of the zoning regulations, but haven't really had the resources to do that. So yeah, lots of, lots of changes could be done here.
This is probably not the time, but, but let's have a discussion offline, perhaps, about what it would take to get these regulations dressed up. You know, it's, it's crazy, you know, to pile right amendment on top of amendment over the years and, and not be able to, and to have this kind of a situation, you know, bite you in the rear, because, because the language isn't right.
Yeah, and this, this term that we're talking about is a term that was just in there for, for decades. That wasn't changed when we redid it.
I understand, but, but let's talk about separately, not as a public meeting necessarily, about what we need to do to fix the regulations going forward.
Right.
We can go to the town and see if we can get the resources to do it.
Yeah, and in the past, we have submitted requests for money to have a consultant come in, you know, who actually has the time to do this, and really address it from top to bottom. But, you know, we haven't had the funding to do that.
If we all get together and beat up select women, we could, we should be able to do this.
Or finance, we gotta go there.
Well, we're to finance. Let's go, let's go.
That's one of the whole, because they have put it in numerous times, and the finance board knocks it down.
Well, this is Ben. I've been having many conversations with Jason Vincent on this very topic, and he was ballparking 100 to 150,000, I think, Keith, right, to do a top-to-bottom upgrade and some change. But in the long... But in the long run, that's cheaper than a couple of lawsuits.
Right.
I'm doing it for 125.
You what?
You know, any zoning regulations are such that any change you make opens up all new sorts of problems. You know, regulations are sort of meant to be challenged, and there's always people out there who are looking to, you know, question what they say because it is about what they say versus what you meant them to say. So even if the regulations are completely brand new and scrubbed by a team of attorneys, you would still have these questions about interpretations and things that don't necessarily mean what we think they mean. But definitely, you know, asking for the resources to do something like this would be the help.
I think our selectmen is listening on tonight, so maybe we'll see what they say.
So, it is, hi, it's June. It is the Board of Finance that approves ultimately the budget. But the Board of Selectmen, and specifically the first selectman, does put forth the town's budget for approval by the Board of Finance. So you'll have our backing for the new year coming up.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. James?
Yes, Mr.
Before you move on, I would like to thank the commission tonight for following the law. I know it was not what you would like, would have preferred, but I would like to thank you for following the law and making your decision on this issue tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
And this is Ben. If I may, I'd like to thank Keith and his staff for doing a whole lot of homework to get us to this point as well.
He's got a lot of work to do in the next two weeks, so...
That's true. Well, next up, we have item 4D to PZ 2002, SD and CAM, Michael Losia, Jr., G. Fettis, request 90-day extension for filing of final subdivision plans. This was a three-lot subdivision approved by the commission on May 26. The commission can grant up to two 90-day extensions on subdivisions. The governor's executive orders told the expiration of land use approvals anyway for a while during the state of emergency. And in general, they just have to follow up with, you know, filing the final plans and some of the legal documents and things like that. So there's really no reason not to grant the extension.
Make a motion to approve the extension.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All business, Keith.
All business, item 6A, PZ 2009, CAM, Mason's Island Company, Mason's Island Properties Association recommend tabling this. We've got an extension from the applicants. They're looking to put in a special use permit to go with this application. Item 6B is PZ 2016 SPA, Stonington Country Club. Site plan application for construction of a two-story, 60-by-24 structure for use as a driving range. Property located at 396 Todd Monk Road, Stonington Assessor's Map, 69 Block 1, Lot 3, Zone GBR 130. I'm not sure if someone is out there to represent the applicant on this. Well, if not, this is an application for an accessory structure at Stonington Country Club. It's basically a structure that acts as a roof for the driving range where people can go under it, shoot the balls out if it's raining. The lower level, I don't want to call it basement or cellar in particular. It doesn't matter with this application. Will have virtual golf driving ranges, almost like, you know, video game simulations of driving ranges. 40, excuse me, about 1,440 square foot building. Conforms to the requirements of the GBR 130 district. Let's see here. It basically looks like a, you know, three-bay garage. It's very far from the street property lines. No bathrooms or water use proposed for the building. It's not within 100 feet of any wetlands. The town engineer had some recommendations for it just to demonstrate that roof leaders will deter water from being discharged toward the tennis courts. Just a note about not having hazardous materials there in the building. So that was the only recommended stipulation is just that final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer regarding his August 26, 2020 comments. But no other issues with this application.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the application with the stipulation that the engineer's requirements be met.
Do I hear a second?
This is Ben, the second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, aye, ten of us.
And we are on to the public hearing.
Colleen wanted to talk. When did she want to talk tonight?
Oh, that was for the retaining wall regulation amendment.
Okay, that's okay.
We'll also have to move forward. Pursuant to the general statute of the state of Connecticut, revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, in pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 1, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. by virtual meeting on the following applications. EZ 2013 SD and GPP, Jane L. Howard, trustee JP Marine, re-subdivision and groundwater protection permit applications for a four-lot open space development. Lots 1 and 2 are developed. Lot 3 is undeveloped. And Lot 4 is the proposed open space. Property located at 152 South Aguila Road, Bockatuck, Assessor's Map 37, Block 1, Lot 8, Zones RR80 and GBR-130.
First, we'll hear from the applicant and all those in favor of the application. Then we'll hear from anyone opposed the application, and then we'll hear any general comments. And then the applicant has the right to rebuttal. Right now, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir, John Paul Marine. So basically, what we have here, gentlemen, is a 13-plus acre parcel that had two buildings, or two dwellings on it. And I think they date back to the '30s and '40s perhaps. The separation between the buildings was such that there was no, you couldn't put a property line between them because of building setback lines. There was a problem in the distance between that. And so we looked at open space development, and even with that, we still needed to get a variance from the ZBA to decrease the 40-foot buffer to 35. But that basically also increased the sideline from what it was, is 25 to 35. So basically gaining 10 foot on that. And it's only on the one lot to the south. Nothing's going to change on the lots 1 and 2. Lot 3 is the only one that can be developed. And there is quite a bit of wetlands in the back of that. Part of that's going to be put into a conservation easement as well as the open space area that's needed in order to make this an open space development. So basically, we're ending up taking two buildings off of one lot and giving them their own lot and creating one additional building lot.
Thank you. Any questions at this time?
One from here. As I recall, the Conservation Commission has not had an opportunity to weigh in on this proposal. And I wonder if we shouldn't wait for that.
We tried. You know, we were all sitting around our screens for a meeting. They are having issues getting quorums lately, especially with the virtual meetings. I don't know if that will change, if this is put off.
We don't, you might have to wait a year for them to get together. I mean...
Can we make approval contingent on Conservation Commission approval?
It might be problematic because if they recommend against it after this commission has approved it, it might be the strange sort of limbo for the applicant. In general, it, just speaking as someone who often attends their meetings, it seems like this is something they would be happy with. I mean, their main task is to advise this commission about recommending open space set aside versus the fee in lieu of open space. And this is a subdivision with a lot of open space that's going to be donated. You know, about 68% of the property will be either set aside as open space or as a conservation easement on one of the lots. The Conservation Commission has targeted the Aguila Brook area in the past as a priority for conservation. So I don't think it's something that they would really have a problem with.
And it has access.
It does in the form of an easement.
Yeah.
This is probably just the second open space development application we've had since we've had these regulations in 2006. The open space development regulations, they basically give a property owner extra flexibility when it comes to the bulk requirements and even the public infrastructure standards of Stonington County Road. In exchange for setting aside at least 50% of the property as open space. So if it's done here, you know, set aside a big chunk of the property as open space.
So this is Ben. How many acres, Mr. Marine, will this be in open space? Roughly. I'm not good at math. 68% of 15 acres is...
Okay, yeah. Sorry, I did... The total area of the open space is going to be 6.94. That's with the conservation easement and open space area.
Great, thank you very much.
And this is Lynn. Where is the public access to the open space? I'm looking at the picture in the proposed layout. So you could access it via South Aguila Road? Is that how you're going to access it?
There is an access to the north of Lot Number 3 that goes along the property line to the 40-foot buffer area for the open space development subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone opposed to this application? Any general comments on this application?
This is Colleen.
If anybody's...
Colleen, Colleen? Colleen's on the phone.
It hasn't been determined who is going to control that open space, has it? Or own it?
I think that's one of the things the Conservation Commission was looking into. There is a couple of things that can be done to that. We can find out if somebody would like to have it to the holdings, or if it would be an open space area that would be held by the owners of the three lots. But there's definitely going to be a pathway cut up and through there. There's an awful lot of wetland back there as well. It's not going to be the easiest thing to access the... But, you know, the owners of the property were quite pleased to be able to put a bunch of open space back here anyways. This is something that they felt this would be a good thing to have happen. They don't utilize that property at this point in time very much anyway.
And the ownership of the open space has to be figured out before the plans are recorded. Because when the plans are recorded, they have to deed the open space to whoever ends up with it. So it's not an issue that can just be undecided for years.
Question? I could see a problem with the homeowners owning and maybe at some time denying access. I think it would be much better for some land trust to control it.
And we have two problems with this property. We don't have the Conservation Commission, and we don't have a legal owner to rely on here. So why would we not defer this until we get those things addressed?
Well, we can continue this public hearing. Keith, how many days we have on this?
We have till October 6. I mean, some words of caution are the Conservation Commission really hasn't met since March or February. So I don't know if they'll be successful getting together. And frankly, we do have some big hearings coming up also.
I think if we could find out who's going to own the open spaces, what the question of the day is. And if it was... That was the... I think that's our main question at this time. Any questions on it?
So let's continue it until, as long as we can, until we get an answer on the...
Let's try to continue it to the next meeting. I think that we should always get an answer on open space between now and then, I hope.
It's, in my experience in dealing with these applications, it often takes a long time to find that answer because property owners have to sometimes negotiate with these land trusts.
Well, I mean, I think it should be said that it's going to be owned by a land trust, not by the property owner. I think that's what we want to see, a third party. I don't care.
Are there a back question for the applicant? Are there any current plans to build?
That's not, to my knowledge, and again, the only lot that they could build is the Number 3 lot. So I don't know if they have plans to build immediately or... I cannot answer that in honesty.
Okay, then I would opt for deferring this until we have the ownership question sorted out. I mean, there's no reason why we have to approve or disapprove anything at this stage. And there's no pressure to do it. So let's not rush into this without answering the ownership question.
Do I hear a motion to continue this hearing?
Still moved.
Second?
This is Ben, I second my motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, thank you very much for your time this evening, and we'll give an answer for you as soon as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along. This is part two of our public hearing. EZ 2015 RA, Town of Stonington, PZC. Zoning regulation amendment to modify various sections of the regulations to require a special use permit for construction of retaining walls over seven feet tall within building setbacks. to require a special use permit for construction of retaining walls over seven feet tall within building setbacks.
Keith, you're on.
Alright, so this is a zoning regulation amendment that um, the commission has put in, um, which would change the language of the zoning regulations to require a special use permit when someone builds a retaining wall of over seven feet tall within building setbacks. We've talked about this issue before in some other applications because um, the way the department has looked at this over the past few years about the issue of retaining walls and setbacks is that if a retaining wall is over three feet tall, it's not allowed in the building setbacks. The reason we came to that conclusion is because the definitions of structure and required yard and zoning say that only ornamental retaining walls are exempt from building setbacks. Three feet tall is when you need a building permit from the building official, so that seemed like the cutoff. Over the, one of the past few meetings, the commission upheld that basic interpretation. But it did allow some retaining walls that exceeded that under specific circumstances. So, the bottom line is that the status quo in the regulations is another thing that's just very unclear. You know, nothing really says that. It's sort of our interpretation, that's very arguable. Um, and there have been negative impacts to that interpretation too, because there are lots of zones with very wide and deep setbacks. Um, and retaining walls are often a necessary thing to develop a site. Um, three feet is also very low. It's sort of beyond, is below what would disturb most people. So, you know, the reason we came up with the regulation we did is because a special use permit would um, allow for public input with a public hearing. It would give the commission some more discretion to address some of the negative impacts. But it wouldn't completely prohibit these sort of retaining walls and building setbacks. The way that um, the regulation is structured is it calls retaining walls of seven feet or more in height, major retaining walls. And there's a new section in the zoning regulations that talks about that and has some standard, general conditions or review criteria for what the commission should look for. Things like um, you know, lack of drainage problems, um, aesthetic issues, public safety, visibility for motorists around corners and driveways. Issues like that. It also says that if a retaining wall is over three feet, you need a zoning permit anywhere, but um, over seven feet in height, within the building setback only, you'd need a special, special use permit. This regulation does not deal with all the specific details about how to build a retaining wall and all the safety issues because those are all covered by the building code. Um, and it's what the building official looks at when he um, when he reviews any retaining wall of over three feet tall. So all the specifics about how it's built and uh, the fall protection, when you need a fence on top, those things are governed by the uh, by the building code. Um, we sent this out for comments, I mean, other people. Um, the town engineer got back to us and um, you know, commented that it might make sense to have this match the building code as far as the definition some more. Um, and recommended that we might want to change the measurement of height instead of just being from the, basically the ground to the wall to being from the bottom of the wall to the top of the wall, even if the bottom of the wall is underground. So you're literally measuring the wall even if it's not visible. Um, so that might be that could be something that makes sense there. So in some cases, if the wall itself is seven feet, you might only see five feet of it. But it would still need a special use permit. The zoning official said that some consideration should be given to visibility for anybody trying to pull out into a public right of way, um, even from a driveway, which I think the regulation covers here. So that's the basic idea behind it. You know, trying to sort of balance the different issues and not have it be as strict as just anything over three feet is not allowed in the building setback. Oh, and the reason we chose seven feet is because that's the height that a fence requires a building permit. That's the only reason why we chose seven feet. It doesn't have to be that. If the commission wants it uh, shorter or taller, uh, that's fine. But keep in mind, if we do tweak the definition to be from the top of the wall to the bottom of the actual wall, that um, seven feet might mean you see less than seven feet.
Okay. Um, let, a question for you, Keith. Um, Keith, if, um, so that means the wall under three feet in height can be built anywhere, anytime without permission. A wall three feet or greater needs a building permit, no matter where it is on the property, correct?
Right.
And a building seven feet tall or taller needs a special use permit if it's in the setback.
That's right. And it's worded to, it's worded such that there has to be a part that's seven feet tall in the building setback to require the special use permit. So if you have a wall that's seven feet tall, that's not in the building setback and part extends into the setback, there's going to be part that's seven feet tall in the building setback to require the special use permit.
Okay. Question, Mr. Chairman. This is Chuck.
Yes, Chuck.
Question of Keith. Um, Keith, I I think that, you know, uh, considering portions of the wall that are below grade and not visible, make, is 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 difficult to put into the regulations, just based on, you know, being the veteran of many retaining wall designs. I I think it, you you know, regardless of what heights we ultimately arrive at, I think what makes a difference is what's visible. So the exposed face of the wall, I think, is what should be uh, should be what you're measuring, not necessarily what's below grade as a cantilevered footing or or something else which which, you know, I don't think should come into play in measuring height. I think it should be exposed face.
Yeah, you know, the town engineer and I sort of went back and forth discussing it. And there's benefits to both sides of it, but I think ultimately zoning is more concerned with what you're talking about with what you see versus what's under the ground. And it's also just easier to uh, to measure.
This is Lynn. Let me ask you a question about that Chuck and Keith. Um, because I was thinking along the same line, but the definition of exposed face. So if we take as an example, the retaining wall that we just proved a couple of years ago outside of the um, uh, uh, YMCA in in Misspeck. You know, you had, you had, it was higher on the face of the wall that was facing the parking lot versus the part of the wall that was facing outward towards the road. So can you use that as an example? Um, as to what you consider the exposed face in that type of.
Uh, I, I'll take a shot at that Keith, if you want. I think the exposed faces, there's always one side of a retaining wall that that the benefit, the beneficiary is, is the person on the, the, usually the non-retained side. So, uh, you know, it's, there's a retained side and a non-retained side. The exposed face uh, is is on the non-retained side of the wall.
Okay, thank you very much. So in that instance, in the, in the uh, the YMCA, you know, so being, I know it's not the YMCA, but the building next to the YMCA there. The wall facing the parking lot was like twelve feet, was, you know, was way over seven feet. And the, what we would define the facing wall to the street was less than seven feet, correct?
So, so under this regulation, that the wall would now require a special use permit.
And it measured from the surface of the parking lot to the top of the wall.
Alright?
That's, that's right.
Okay.
And in a lot of cases, these retaining walls are already before you as part of some larger special use permit like this anyway. But this regulation, you know, does tick them before you, uh, when it would be the case. Just for some extra oversight.
But then, Mrs. Bad, I agree with Chuck saying that it has to be what's exposed, because otherwise is the footing part of the measurement that's underground? You know, what's the wall? The footing of the, where does the wall begin and the footing end type of thing?
Yeah, it could be, it could be difficult to measure. We'd have to probably better define exactly what the bottom is if you do that.
Footing ends at the surface of the wall, where the wall becomes enclosed.
Well, well, it's a vertical surface.
Any other questions at this time? Carleen? I think Carleen has something to say on this. She want, she wanted to call in on it. Carleen, are you there?
She's on my screen. I I see her.
It's trying to get lit up.
Yeah, I see her actually.
So, Carleen, if you're having, if you're having a hard time um, speaking, there's also a chat function. So, if you put your cursor towards the bottom of the screen, there's like the little cartoon uh, cartoon bubble thing that's a chat function, so you can type in there a question that everyone will see.
Is that on my screen?
I see her as having dialed in, but uh, there's no image.
No, she doesn't have anything. She's gonna call.
Shows headphones and a phone, both, for Carleen. She said twice.
And and I see her mute button, button cutting off and on on the phone also.
Yeah. Has she submitted anything in writing?
Uh, no.
Unusual.
I just put something in the chat to see if you maybe see that.
I see it.
Yeah, we see it.
Yeah.
It worked before.
Oh.
Alright, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. It's very echoey, but yes.
Alright, um, um. My concern was that it should be lower than seven feet, especially if it's a, just a wall to keep your privacy rather than a retaining wall. Um, I think the picture that was in the planner's report showed something similar to that. Uh, and and as a neighbor, I wouldn't want someone to build a seven foot wall between our properties, and I have to look at it. At least there would be an opportunity with a public hearing for me to express my concern to the commission. So, to me, anything over, you know, five feet is is as tall as I am. And I wish I could stand in front of you so you could see it. And and comparing it to a fence, which is one dimension in height on- only, when you have a wall which has width to it, it becomes massive. And so this is, you know, you're talking retaining walls re- versus just regular walls. Anyway, I I I really feel that seven feet should be reduced. So it's up for you to to decide.
Thank you, Carleen.
Welcome.
Is there any other, what's the commission feel on this one?
Check if there's anybody else out there.
I, is anyone else on, like to speak on this application? Either way, for or against? Any open, any general comments? You none or go back?
Yeah, and this, the seven feet could be lowered to something if the commission, you know, thinks it should be six or five or something else. The required votes once you close the hearing is a decision on the application's conformance with the P O C D. And the conformance with the comprehensive plan, which is sort of the combination of the zoning map and regulations. Um, and just a decision on the regulation amendment itself. If it is approved, the effective date would be uh, September twentieth. But um, yeah, I think if we're just going to go with looking at the wall and not looking at the ground, then we don't have to tweak the language talking about how you measure the height.
Mr. Chairman, this is Chuck. Uh, I I would suggest if it's exposed face that there's some substance to uh, you know, the the comment that seven feet would be a very tall wall. And uh, that we could lower if it's exposed face that that five feet is probably a more reasonable standard uh, to allow without a special permit. Uh, but that would, that opinion is based on the fact that it is measured from the ground to the top of the wall, not from the bottom of the footing.
Exposed face only for retaining wall.
Correct.
Is it, is it uh?
Hold on. I'd like to close the public hearing now, and then we can go on to the discussion. Is that alright?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All of you favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now let's go on.
Okay, uh, question, is it, is it uh, any, is it a real burden to say, uh, if we were to say that uh, that the walls over three feet, exposed face, require, in setback, require a special use permit? uh, that the walls over three feet, exposed face, require, in setback, require a special use permit? Now, there's, now we, uh, require a variance for, but why not just, why not pick a number to say if you get over the point where, where they can be approved as a, you know, as a routine matter, then like to get a special use permit? Is that a problem?
Mr. Chairman, can I still speak in regular session or?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I, 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 I just seems to me that three feet is, is, you know, puts us right back where we started. I, I, you know, to me, the lowest that we should consider would be like four, four feet, but, but, uh, I, I, and I, and I agree with what Fred is saying, that we should pick something and it, it should be something that, that is reasonable. And, uh, and to me, that lowest reasonable number, if it's exposed face, is, is four feet. Uh, or else you're, we look at special permits for retaining walls. Uh, as lot, as land becomes more scarce and scarce, you're going to be looking at retaining walls with every single lot that comes in here. And, uh, you know, to me, four feet is, is reasonable. And i- if it's exposed face and, and that we should allow that without, without the, the extra administrative requirement of a special use permit.
This is Ben. I think, I'm well put, Chuck. Um, Keith, how much does a special use permit cost to the general applicant?
Uh, about 500.
Yeah, that's a stiff.
In the time it takes, the time it takes.
Yeah.
As I see it.
Colleen agrees, five foot's pretty good.
I, I, I would support either four or five, even though I can't vote on this. I, I, I would support four or five as being, as being reasonable. And I think, I think the comment that Colleen made is, is a reasonable comment that the seven feet, if it's exposed face, is too high. And I understand where, where professionals who advise us got that from. They were considering also the additional footing. If it's exposed face, I think either four or five is a reasonable requirement.
This is Lynn, and I think Colleen was saying she was five feet. I don't think she was saying the five feet.
No. What she said, what she said, what she was five feet, and she thinks that seven feet is too tall. And that seven feet should require a special, you know, the-
She said, she said five feet was all right.
She did say five.
It's a new town measurement. It's one Carleen height.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would agree with a four foot. I, 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 I always like to do things incrementally and I would agree with a four foot height limitation. And I think that seems reasonable.
In the setback.
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry. I had something come out of the printer. So, I, you know, either four or five. And I, I don't, I don't disagree with either of those as, as being, as being reasonable and unobtrusive. And you should not force, you should not force an applicant uh, to go for a special use permit, which most people are so unfamiliar with, they also have to get an attorney to represent them. You know, it, it, it can be done, it can be done tastefully. It still gets reviewed. It still has to have an engineer's stamp on it. Um, it, it's, it's subject to all kinds of additional requirements. You're just not telling the person they have to, they have to, you, you know, it's an engineered wall. They just don't have to get a special use permit for it, which I think is, is an extraordinary requirement for, for, you know, uh, even a five-foot wall. But, but I don't think four is unreasonable, and I think Lynn makes some good points.
So, what if you?
Mean in between, you know, four foot six?
Even better.
Oh, sure.
I agree.
No.
No.
No, Ben.
How do you feel on? Gardner? Gardner, do you have any opinion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I thought, I get too excited about this one way or the other, you know, four feet, five feet, whatever, whatever floats everybody's boat is fine with me.
Uh, I, I could do, uh, five feet's fine. I'm taller than that, so I can see over it.
Yeah.
You know, one issue with going with four is that there's only a one-foot difference between the two categories of walls now, where three feet, you need a zoning permit. Just one foot more in the setbacks, you need a whole special use permit. So, I don't even know if, you know, if the commission wants to go with four, that's fine. I don't know if it should mean sort of reviewing this regulation again to see if that makes sense? Or to see if everything should just be four, just to see if there's a better way to get there, is what I'm trying to say. Because the regulation was sort of written with these two levels of just three feet and seven feet. And now there's just, there's barely any difference between the two.
So, do you want to, you want to put this off and, and think about it some?
Yeah, if three feet is the, I mean, excuse me, if four feet is the going consensus of the, of the commission, I think we probably should.
Okay, works for me.
Well, do you want to vote on how many people want, how many?
Do you, you want to open the, reopen the public hearing and continue it?
I'm so moved.
Public hearing is reopened.
Uh, continue to the next meeting?
Yeah, to the next meeting. Is, is anyone agreeing on that?
Uh, Keith, come back to us with that.
Yeah, I don't want five, I, I don't see, I agree with, five feet's fine. I agree with Fred. I can see over it.
I like five feet.
What? You like?
But I can't, so I have to tell you, I'm, I'm five-two.
Oh, you can see over it.
That, no, no, I can't see over it. You know, I'm just saying, you know, I think a retaining wall is the kind of thing that, you know, you should be able to, and I, I just, um, you know, I, if you're, if you're five-two, you can't easily see over a wall that's five foot. I don't know. My personal.
If, if you step back, you can.
Well, lots of times you're not stepping back, right? I mean, that's the whole point, but. Anyway, I'm just saying, I'm going to be very careful in, in thinking this through very carefully.
Yeah, hold on. Right, just, I just want to take a consensus. Ben, you go with five foot.
Yes, sir.
Fred?
Yep.
Gardner, you don't care, do you? Whatever.
I really, I really don't care five feet, four feet, ever, whatever works.
I feel. I feel five feet. I don't want seven feet. I think five foot's a good compromise. So, let us continue it to the next meeting, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Make a motion to continue the hearing till next time.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh.
Lynn, Lynn, I don't think we heard you.
I, I said aye, sorry.
Uh, that's it, I think, tonight. Nothing else on the agenda, is there, Keith?
Oh, no, that is it.
Make a motion to close the special hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, continue the public hearing.
I said the special hearing, the tonight's hearing.
Oh, size read.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn. Next meeting Tuesday at 15:00.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, we got wind development then, public hearing.
Oh, boy.
So, everyone, that's that big one in, down in the parking lot.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, good night, everyone.